Oh.
Thank you.
You can also make that. Well, I've already got the one plan set for it to go on there. Nothing is perfect.
All right, I got five. Yeah. We've called meet order. Five regular members, we've got a quorum and alternate. And now next up is approval of minutes of August 11. I'm playing two.
I move while we accept the minutes of August 11. That's written.
Second, second, good, any discussion?
Oh, my only comment was that under Bruce Clapham's review, it says it tripled by thirty-five hundred feet. I think that's thirty-five hundred square feet.
I wasn't there for the whole.
Yeah, square feet, so the only thing is a change of the square. Square feet. Yeah. It's the third dot down, or no, yeah, from the bottom. Yeah.
So I will amend my motion to as corrected.
Second, and further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed, say nay? All right, all business, land use ordinance, Bruce, Bruce Clapham, map forty lot thirty-seven, application thirty-eight dash twenty-two to renovate an enlarged guest house. Am I looking at the side review from that?
Yes.
Was there anything else we were holding up for?
No, it was just. It was just the site review.
So we've got the site review, looks like all set back from that?
Easily, yes.
Easily?
Yes.
That's okay. Uh, so what would be next?
I move that application value thirty, thirty-eight dash twenty-two is complete.
Second. All right, seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? So there's complete. No public hearing involved?
No.
Don't make that motion, no public hearing involved. Second? Any discussion? All in favor, aye? Any opposed, nay? We had approval, or do we, are we at, um, we, have we already done minor, major? Have our been determined? Land use only. So the next up then is to accept it?
The board approve application value thirty-eight dash twenty-two.
And if they second it?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Everybody. Yeah.
I'll say Roger.
I heard Roger. No discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, say nay? So that'll be another text message I get for affirming. All right. Next up. New business, land use ordinance, this is Josh Conover, present. Say again?
Zach.
Oh, Zach?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
The other Conover.
I, the question still stands.
Let's go on Zoom.
No, this Terry.
All right, then.
I told him he should leave here.
I make the motion that we go out of order on the agenda.
Second?
Any discussion on it? And all in favor, aye? Any opposed, nay? Next up, Peter Mills. Map thirty-eight lot two, application forty-one, twenty-two, to build a sixteen by twenty-one kitchen addition into, onto this structure along with a wood deck.
So, Peter, is the majority of the addition or the work is going to be in the back of the house away?
It's all in the back of the house.
So.
With the exception, no, I take that back, with the exception of this, well, the roof that the, in the front that goes around the corner, that's gonna get cut back to be a little more appropriate. Okay, it's a, it, it runs like this around the corner and comes back, that's gonna be modified slightly. But I don't, but all the work is in the back with the exception of that one roof modification in the front.
Is it on this?
Uh, it's, it's, there's one more, I mean, you can. I can, I can show you, I just didn't copy that page that I will show you. Yeah.
Do we have a plot plan of the measurements on it?
Sorry.
It's here, it's, if you look at it closely, it's got the measurements.
Now, what I, what I did, because the plot plan is so small, on the, on the pictures, I have the measurements laid out off of the side view. So the fifty-eight feet, forty-nine feet, forty-seven feet, fifty-four feet, and fifty feet are to the wall that abouts the property.
And they come inside of that one, right?
Yeah, yeah, they, they, this bill goes with that, that, the house on the plot plan is so tiny. And there are, there are dimensions on that, I believe.
There are.
Yeah.
But I also put them on this picture so you can see them.
Yeah.
It's a little clearer, because there's stairs that are being added. Yeah.
Well, I did want to point out that this lot, a portion of it is noted in the town centers. But where I am confused is what applies here? I mean, if we were gonna have an actual increase in number of houses, would we go under town centers? I'm actually looking at the, uh.
Are you jumping to the Johnson things? Are you jumping to those?
No, it's just under in our, our town centers map.
Do you have a copy of that?
Yeah, see, it's right back there next to Dave.
All right.
And it twiggles around that lot. It's because of all the shoreline zones around it. The property has, is primarily in the shoreline zone.
Right, it, a very small portion of it is in the town center.
Yeah, yeah.
The triangles, yeah.
Yeah, and that's where I'm confused, and actually having Tom here is what takes the priority.
It's wrong with that because of the shoreline protection.
Yeah.
This goes all the way around.
Right, so resource protection would be the same.
That's the roof I'm talking about right there. That roof now continues all the way around, we're just gonna show. It's more proportional. No, no, it'll be the same overhang, it just gets shortened up, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you show us again?
Again?
Jen, could you express again your concern about?
Oh, it's just confusing, so then in terms of
Just a little tease, I'd say no.
Minimum lot size for a property, or say some of those other properties that have.
Is any, is any of the work that's being done inside that?
No, I just think it's gonna be something that's gonna come up in the future. But I can get it clarified with Tom, there was another project we were working on currently that has that problem.
You know, and when we originally laid this out, we included all those lots, and then we realized that the state regs superseded anything we did, so we had to pull that setback from the shoreline.
So the whatever zone is in is the primary zone, and town centers doesn't apply at all within those zones, within those lots.
I think that's correct, but David knows.
Yeah, yeah, you, you would go with the, the acre and a half. For this particular part, because they're not, he's not, A, he's not doing anything on that little triangle.
Right, yeah, no, I was just curious.
And the bigger portion of the lot is in rural, rather than the town center.
Right.
How far is that line from where he's building?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, quite a distance.
Yeah.
I'm just adding twenty feet to the back of the building, and then connecting that and the deck, I'm not, I'm not going sideways.
Well, by scale, it's probably, it's probably fifty feet.
That's fine then.
So this is the lot?
Yeah, no, I was just curious, because there, you know, there are a number of lots are having this issue.
Almost two hundred feet between structure and.
So. Right, seeing you for a site review for this one?
I wouldn't think if you did, it, it's only to check that measurement at that point, but if it's two hundred feet, I would say no.
I would say not necessarily. The one thing I want to clear up, though, that caught my eye was, the number seventeen on the application, lot area square feet, two point two nine, I think that means acre.
Yeah, I forgot to put the acre on.
I think that means acre.
Yes, it does.
So.
Okay.
Does the does the original application have the permanent application number on it?
I'll have to look, I don't have the original on my hand.
No, it doesn't. Oh, it's, oh, I see the original.
The original, yes, it does.
Okay.
Forty-one, twenty-two.
And what is it I'm looking for on the original?
Application number. Up here.
So.
Give me a second. That's Clapham, that's calling with Peter Mills right here. Okay.
So.
Wait, are we, are we at that point, are we, questions answered good enough, or we have other questions?
I move that application forty-one dash twenty-two is complete.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Any opposed, say nay? Okay.
I move that a public hearing is not necessary.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Any opposed, say nay? All right.
I move the application, I move that the board approve application forty-one dash twenty-two.
Second.
Any discussion?
Did you do the public hearing?
No.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, back to being approved, and any second? Yeah? Okay, I couldn't remember. I lost in conversation there, so any discussion on whether to approve or not? On being heard, all in favor, say aye?
All right.
Any opposed, say nay? All right, Peter, you'll be getting a permit when I get the text message to sign it, and they'll send it to you.
I appreciate you.
Thank you, babe.
Yes. I'm glad you put the number on it. Bill, you're getting after it, right, buddy? Thank you, guys.
Peter, Peter.
The envelope for free was the ink to print their application, they cost real money.
All right. Staying out of order, next up would be belt and review ordinance. Osborne Economic Sustainability Corporation, map seventeen lot twenty-three, to construct a new nine by ten accessible toilet renovation, including new exit door and exterior stair to, I see, and to enclose and insulate a portion of existing covered deck to provide access to addition. All this work is getting done on the back porch, basically, isn't it? A little bit to the side between the market building and the house.
It's all, it's all one piece of property, though, right?
Yes.
The only new part of the footprint, you can see, if you look at this elevation proposed west side.
Said west side? Well, it's the side, yeah.
See, that, that's, that's the part that sticks out from the building, and it's beyond the existing deck.
So you have to move for septic tank?
Move what?
Septic tank?
No, we just did a new septic system for the house and store, and so there are three big holding tanks because of the grease trap, but all that's, it just shows you about where they are on the proposed plan, the first page. And we just threw that in there to show you that we're not impending on those holding tanks. They're already in the ground, all that's in place and functioning.
Okay.
Yeah, I think my son tried to drive over the top of them there a little while ago.
Oops.
I had to go drag him up, because he was in some soft sand. So you might not want to do this again. And it is all part of one property, there is no line down in the middle of it? No. It's one property.
Still. No, Bill Barry bought from the Boardman Trust, and that, that entire piece is what we bought.
Yeah.
Bill?
Bill?
Sorry, I don't see a plot plan here.
Uh. It's in our.
Didn't get mine. We can't look at this without a plot plan, I mean, I understand what you're saying.
Looking myself.
Plot plan.
There's this one here.
No, I don't, we don't have that, but that other is not, that's not a plot.
It's just folded, I think.
It's just folded.
Fair.
You got this?
Oh, it's folded. Oh, I wondered. I wasn't gonna ask the question, I says, dummy, why? But it was folded, so I don't feel so bad.
I wouldn't have seen it either.
Yeah, yeah, okay, good.
That answers that question. The actual new footprint, and then we're enclosing some of that existing back there.
In answer to your question about the plot plan, though, there are no measurements on it, but, but everything is existing, with the exception of that one addition, and the well is out in front of the house.
Yep.
Right. And it's marked on the plan there, there's a little W.
A W.
Yeah, I see it. I see it, and it's also showing approximate location holding tank.
If we're really being technical, we require everyone else to put a, a, a dimension
Right.
from the lot lines, even if we know.
Right.
Even though it's evident that it's, it's below than the, so I would suggest you do that.
And what he's asking for, if you don't familiar with what he's asking for, is just measurements, how far away to the well, how far away to septic system?
And from all the lot lines.
Yeah, and. Lot lines.
And you can do estimated by scale, it's no, it's not a big deal.
And he's right, we do require it from other folks, too, so.
So can we amend that and give it to Dave, is that what we do?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, they'll put it in the motion.
Okay.
Anybody got anything else they want to look at? I mean, site review, and did it already get squashed, or did?
Need a site review.
Say again?
I don't think you need a site review.
We, we've all done an awful lot of site reviews of that place.
I am aware. Just going through the motions.
Yeah, good.
So I move. What is it?
We can't move that it's complete without the.
No, it's a bit of a contentious.
Okay.
Can we scale it and give you the numbers right now? I mean, it's really not that.
Put it on the contingency and go on, we can get it anytime.
It's not gonna hold back.
Yeah.
So just get it to this office in the next couple of days.
Just get it today, whenever you can.
And I'll, whatever you give me, I'll book with the original application.
Okay.
At the next meeting. Yeah, the contractor's not gonna show up before.
This, this is a development review process.
Find a contractor?
So I move that M D O two dash twenty-two is complete contingent on receiving setback measurements.
Second. Any discussion? All in, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed, say nay?
I move that a public hearing is not necessary for application M D O two dash twenty-two.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Any opposed, say nay?
Are you saying nay?
No. You causing trouble?
I move the board approve M D O two dash twenty-two contingent on receiving setbacks.
There you go. Seconded. All the discussion? All discussion, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed, say nay?
Thank you, we will do.
Will we also have to do that checklist for development review?
I didn't hear that.
Oh.
The checklist, the.
Finding of fact.
Finding some fact. Yeah.
Yeah, it's a development review, right?
Yeah, I guess I jumped the gun a little.
Well, we haven't done development review for a while.
What's this?
Can we?
We can amend it right now, I mean, because we haven't closed out the sole session or anything like that, so, yeah, we can back up, regroup.
Well, or just quickly. Put it in the thing in the beginning.
Let's just back up, regroup, we're gonna.
Put a table.
Table for, for, finds a fact.
Right, because we have to have them to sign.
Right.
Sorry, guys.
Right, so, that being said, I move that we disregard the approved, when we approved, um, where is it?
O two dash twenty-two.
O two dash twenty-two. All right, where am I?
M D.
I think we can quickly go through by the fact now, so we can just approve them.
Where is it?
This is all for proofing subdivision developments, I don't know.
Is, I remember it's M D.
Nineteen forty-five dash nineteen.
Going backwards, I move that we don't, we take away the approved portion of M D O two dash twenty-two.
Where rescinding, where rescinding our vote that just took place.
So this is the checklist that you need to go through, or we need to go through?
No, we do.
We need to know through.
It's just the findings of fact, which.
It's a finding of fact for any development, that's the problem.
Yeah, any application.
Any commercial, we miss a bolt.
Yeah, so it's really.
What?
Shall we just go through?
It's already been, well, maybe back in the day, didn't go through this, wouldn't have done, well.
No, no, I think any development review.
I know, any application, but just, even.
Finding of fact, we also have to determine whether it's a major or a minor.
Yeah.
Right? Which I can say this is probably a minor.
Yeah, yeah. But it still needs to be done.
Right, that's great.
And.
We could do it tonight.
We can, but we can't sign off on it.
No.
But then it'll be printed up.
Yeah, it'll be ready for next meeting.
Sign off on it next meeting.
We'll expedite if we go through that step to, tonight.
Um, I'm not gonna be here next meeting, so I don't know if Wendy wants to participate in this part. Or it doesn't matter.
Oh, she can participate, she can participate next meeting, if you know the.
Yeah, okay.
So I.
Regardless, it's not, it's not officially approved until that's done.
Correct.
And signed off.
Right.
Yeah.
So we can go through the checklist, that's not a problem, we go through the checklist, it'll get typed up, it'll get approved theoretically in two weeks.
I don't know who I am.
All right.
I move that. I move that application M D O two dash twenty-two is a qualified for a minor development.
Seconded. Any discussion?
Who seconded that, sir?
Bill.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, have we rescinded the, the approval already? We have.
No, nobody voted on it, sorry.
I don't, I don't, I don't think we did.
Yeah, there was a motion.
You started to make a motion, but we didn't go anywhere.
There was a motion by Bill, but I didn't get a second or a vote. Oh, second.
Any discussion on rescinding of that approval, prior approval? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Want to make sure that got taken care of. Okay, now we're at findings of facts, correct?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you for volunteering.
Okay, will not result in undue water or air pollution, making this determination, the board shall at least consider the elevation of the land above sea level and its relation to floodplains, the nature of soils and subsides, and their ability to adequately support waste disposal, the slope of the land, and its effect on effluents.
And what are we looking for, non-applicable, or meet standards?
Meet standards. Because septic system is existing. That sound right?
Okay.
Do we vote on each one of these?
Yeah.
Okay. And when did we, did we approve A, if this, that meets the standards, A?
Yeah.
You don't usually vote.
Well, you don't, you don't vote, everybody just agrees.
What's that?
Then you vote on the whole.
Well, that's what I asked, was there was a vote?
Yeah, at the very end.
Okay, good, fine.
But you're looking at some kind of discussion on each one of those items.
Just. I'm just, a quick question, what is the square footage of this addition?
Of the addition or the entire enclosed?
Just the new, whatever you're adding on to the building, the addition.
It's just that small piece there.
Something.
Seven.
It's not much.
No, it's a eleven. Five.
Eight, eight foot four.
Eight foot four.
So.
Ninety-nine.
And how much is it gonna cost to put on this addition?
Oh goodness, I don't know.
You don't have a contractor yet?
Well, we've, you know, we've put out, we got somebody that's interested, but.
Well, we don't have the information, we could have dropped the development review application if it was under a hundred and twenty square feet and didn't cost more than three thousand dollars.
Oh, it's gonna cost more.
It'll cost more than three thousand dollars.
But that's for the addition, oh, I see alteration, you're altering building, yeah, okay, sorry. I just noticed that there was a way we could weasel out of this.
Thank you for considering.
I, I, Jennifer, I looked at that, when they were putting the application in, just for that reason.
So where are we at, B?
B.
B has sufficient quantity and quality of water available for the reasonable foreseeable needs of the proposed project.
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, we have a toilet there already, and we're just relocating it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, meet standard, existing well.
Sure.
Will not cause unreasonable burden on, and existing water supply is one to be.
Yeah, yeah.
Meet standards.
Standards, well, existing well. Will not cause unreasonable soil erosion or reduction in the capacity of land to hold water so that a dangerous or unhealthy condition may result.
Well. Meet standards.
Meet standards. Grading. Will occur, proper grading will occur, that is in, in the permit.
Yeah, there's virtually no change on the grade at all. There will be a, this new, this small piece we just, we mentioned, will have a concrete footing. We will put a concrete footing underneath part of the existing open deck at the back and enclose that. But as far as grading around the building, it, it will not be changed.
Okay. Um, so won't change existing grading. Will not cause. What letter are you on now? Uh, E, thank you. Will not cause unreasonable public or private road congestion or unsafe conditions with respect to the use of public or private roads existing or proposed, including parking at rental points.
No.
Seagulls, not applicable.
Right. I always laugh at that.
Existing use.
Yep.
That will provide for adequate solid sewage and sewage waste disposal, meet standards.
Sure, yes.
Existing septic. Um, will not cause unreasonable, this is G, Carrie. Thank you. Will not cause an unreasonable burden on the ability of the town to dispose of solid waste and sewage if municipal services are to be utilized, not applicable. H will not have undue adverse effect on the scenic or natural beauty of the area. Aesthetics, historic rare and irreplaceable natural areas, or any public rights for the physical, for visual access to the shoreline.
Will not.
It will all look nicer with the addition than it does now.
So is that N A, or meet standard?
I would say non-applicable.
Yeah, sure. I is in conformance with this chapter, other applicable local ordinances, state and federal laws and regulations, the town's comprehensive plan, development plan, or master land use plan, if, if any. Meet standard.
Sure, meet standard.
Will not, uh, J will not create an adverse physical impact on, upon the municipality's ability to provide or improve necessary public facilities and services, including transportation and, and parking.
Will not.
Meet standards, because you're upgrading the public toilet, right?
Well, it's still, it's still.
It's fully imposed.
It's a.
Yeah, it's still, whether it's public or not, it's not really designed, it's.
It's just.
Right, but it's not on any kind of public stuff, so. Anyways, J K, right?
So is it meets, or, or non-applicable? Not applicable. K will not alone or in conjunction with existing activities adversely affect the quality or quantity of groundwater.
We'll go, meet standards there, too.
Okay. L will not un, unreasonably interfere with access to direct sunlight for solar energy, not applicable. M will not adversely affect the quality of the body of water or easily, unreasonably affect shoreline. Da, 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 not applicable.
Correct. Next is flood hazard area.
That's it.
Flood hazard area forty-five twenty, then forty-five twenty-one.
Yeah. But, so flood hazard area is not applicable.
Flood.
It's not within a flood hazard area.
Right.
On financial and technical capacity. A. Applicants shall have adequate financial and technical capacity to meet stated standards, meet standards. The developer shall upon request of the board submit detailed financial statements. Not applicable.
Not applicable.
That's it.
That's the.
Period. Yeah. Okay.
So now we table it for the finalization of the.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I, before that, shouldn't we make a motion that we, that we agree that it meets the criteria and standards?
Um, I think we do that when we.
Once it's all printed out, we, uh.
Oh, all right, okay.
Because we had to sign, we all had to sign.
Okay. Okay.
That's one that we all have to sign, isn't it?
Yes. Yes, you all have to sign that, and you all have to sign the.
Yeah.
So now we have to table it to the finalization of finding the facts.
Yep, and approve, and approve the, if there are any conditions, but.
Right, so.
Right, was that a motion?
Yeah, I don't have that number again, though, for some reason, so.
M D twenty, M D O two, O two dash twenty-two.
O two dash twenty-two. Uh, table for finalization of finding the facts. Discussion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
So just to be clear, the only things we need to provide to David are the dimensions showing distance from the addition to the wellhead, septic system, and all adjacent lot lines.
Yep.
Yeah. And you'll have that to us before we're ready to sign off on anything.
Yeah, I mean, we're wanting, Roger's entertained most of it by on his phone right now, but that doesn't help us, I know.
Right. Yeah, we'll, we'll submit as an amended plot.
Good.
It has been a while. Thank you for the education on the planning board process.
Well, itself, itself, what we call self-congratulations.
We have to remind ourselves.
We're thanking ourselves. I'm fairly new here, so I.
We're all still learning, we're all still.
We're all, absolutely, learning process.
And we're often all so old we forget.
Anything else from us tonight?
No, thanks to you folks.
You're good for your consideration.
Get it, get that from them.
I'll make a motion for return to the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, Zach calling over, map thirty-one, lot five C, application thirty-nine twenty-two, to build two additions, both twelve by eighteen to existing house under shed sixteen by twenty, approximately sixty feet behind the house.
Dave, I have a question on the lot plan. What's the fourteen by eighteen square?
Find that, yeah.
Oh, that's the, that's a deck. There's a deck. Mention, did you mention, it took me a while to figure out where, oh, I think it's on that figure, it says. The dining room with a deck to the north, western side, western side will be a pantry, it took me a while to figure that one out.
All right, I see a site review on this one, we have some close plot lines.
Yeah, that's what I say.
Table, table of the site review?
Yeah, just, just, just as a, I mean, not just saying that's it right now, ready to make that motion, I'm just saying, that's gonna be a motion. Because of how close the lot lines are.
Yeah, he's got one there, just within a foot, not making, except that.
Right.
That's existing, though.
That one is existing?
Yeah.
Then you got the twenty feet over here for the sixteen by twenty?
Yeah.
And a twelve by eighteen?
Yeah.
Is a twelve by eighteen existing?
No.
No.
And the sixteen by twenty is not existing either.
Right. It's the twenty foot that it goes.
Yeah, I was just curious about the second floor, it's a proposed sleeping loft, or? I don't know, it has four bedrooms. No, no shed. I was gonna say, that shed is incredible.
Yeah, yeah, because he's actually eliminating one bedroom.
Yeah. It does have ten, it's probably the party house. Yeah, that probably is what it's gonna be for the kids out back.
So two additions to the house, is that?
And one at each end.
One at each end, twelve by eighteen.
The deck and shed.
Yeah, and is there some kind of a limit as to how much of an addition can be put onto a house?
No, well.
Not in that location.
Not on this one, yeah.
Right, not in that location.
Right.
If it was on the water, that'd be a different story.
It would, or if it was a non-conforming lot.
Right, it would be a different story.
It would be a different story. He's got plenty of lot size to accommodate.
Yeah.
What he's wanting to do.
Anyone see anything else?
No, I'm looking, not looking forward, just looking. Well. Then I would make a motion that application thirty-nine dash twenty-two be tabled for a site review.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Who's going? Dave, you're gonna be responsible for contacting the callers?
Yep.
I'll, I'll go, Dave.
I'll go, Dave. I'd like to go to one today. Okay, Isabel and Roger, I won't schedule this one tonight like I have been in the past, because I want to make sure Zach is.
Right.
Involved and.
Yeah.
Make sure everything's staked out and all that.
Right.
So I will.
I think he might have started on this project.
Well, that's no good, you'll have to find him. Yes, that would depend on how much he started.
Yeah, and what, what he's doing. If anything, it might be the shed.
All right. Um, we clear on that one then? And I've got a CEO report up next.
What month is this for?
Oh, July.
I'm assuming lot cleanup was trees gotten down or something?
Yeah, tree, you know, dead and dying trees, dead fall, like that, if it's in the shoreline zone, they have to get a permit.
Right, to clean it up.
To clean it up, yes.
Do they have two years on the same permit? Do they have two years on the same permit to keep cleaning it up?
Yeah, okay, yep. However, I always put a condition on them, that anything, see, because the shoreline zone from hot, normal high tide extends in two hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah.
But.
There's a seventy-five.
That seventy-five foot buffer zone, I always put a contingent in there, if they're going to do anything in that area, they have to contact me first, and we.
And let you know.
Let me know, and I go down and look and see exactly what they want to do. Make suggestions that, no, don't take that tree, maybe just take a couple limbs off or something like that.
Yeah.
The goal is to preserve that buffer zone as much as possible. If it's a tree that is leaning and is creating like an imminent danger to a structure or something like that, then.
Or. What do they call it, widow maker that's?
Yeah. In shoreline zone, even a leaning tree is protected.
I know.
Wait for the wind to blow it down.
Yeah.
If it's alive, you mean?
Yes, what about a dead tree? A dead tree, you can, you still need a permit, definitely.
Okay. Anybody wishing to address the planning board? I have no response. We have, uh, training coming up, or has that already happened?
Thursday.
No.
Thursday?
Twenty-fifth.
Okay. And everybody's going? You're going? Roger, you're not going, right?
I, I have a conflict, and it's something I have to work out. I may be going, and I'll let you know, maybe if I have.
It would be interesting if they touch on any of this stuff.
I was hoping so, because it's, it, yes, it's, yes.
It's.
Yeah.
It's the legal team from the MSMMA that's gonna be doing this, so I'd be willing to bet that is gonna be a topic.
He might bring that along, right?
Hmm.
If you have one already in your plans.
Yep, because, um.
We're supposed to discuss that tonight, aren't we?
Uh, I think that was on the agenda. Yeah, Jensen Baird Ordinance Review, check this.
Yeah. Wendy, number. On page five, number five.
I don't have one with me, but.
Our lawyer, the town's lawyer, does understand.
Yeah, I know, yeah, yeah, so I was really hoping they would go over some of that.
Which one is that?
Page five, number five.
Number five.
Lines up.
Yeah, and just giving us a better table to understand the headers on the other side.
And I'm kind of, I don't really understand what, as a board, we have to do, because this means.
I think we have to put it into writing.
I think it has to change, might have to change some of the ordinances that we are.
And do we do, do we do that?
Yes, but then you have to have, take it to the town to vote on.
Yeah, okay, but we write the new order.
We'll probably, we ask the attorney.
Exactly, exactly.
Yes.
And I guess we have to.
If she doesn't understand it, there's no chance I'm understanding it.
Yeah, I guess we do have to go into our book and see what needs to be changed.
Okay. So.
Which ordinance?
Where do I hunt? I don't have my list in front of me, so.
With this?
Yeah. What do we need to go find out? We'll have a, we'll have a contest, Jennifer, and, and.
See the best.
See the best at first.
Yeah, write this down.
Write it down.
Maybe wait a little later in the fall when things are a little slower.
I guess we, actually, we have.
Yeah, it's already in effect.
Yeah, you got, you could do it at the town meeting.
And do what?
Next year.
Prove it.
Yeah.
I don't think.
You got plenty of time to talk about it.
Back until July.
Oh, when the next town meeting is.
I, not, some of these are mandated and.
Right, they said.
Or you, or you have that with special town meeting.
No, oh. July first, twenty twenty-three. Or. Changes to the affordable housing density. And increased density is. July first, twenty twenty-three.
The one good thing is it says that none of these supersede the shoreline zoning, so the shoreline zoning ordinance.
None of them supersede the shoreline.
But it's on the last page.
So, so does it, does this mean that, for example, in a rural zone, that. Any buildable lot, so any acre and a half lot can have.
Well.
Two, two dwelling units?
Well, they're saying on that, I, page one of LP two thousand three, page one of that table. If the zoning district allows multifamily dwellings, so we only have what the town centers allows. Is that the only place, or do we allow?
ADUs or something, is that what you're talking about?
Multi-family dwellings.
Oh, is that like an apartment building, then?
Yeah. Like you tell me, want to put up a duplex, so.
Yeah.
But they can be, can they be anywhere?
Yes.
Development review.
It would, yeah, because if they're gonna do it as a commercial enterprise, it would have to be a development.
Yeah, but, yeah, right now, if you have three acres, you can put a duplex on.
True.
So, and when this goes into effect, if you have an acre and a half.
The way I read it, yes, I would want some clarification from Jensen Baird, but the way I read it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does.
Actually, so I don't think it's. So increased density requirements apply to all areas where single-family housing is allowed, so for developed with one dwelling unit, right? Not, you know, it's approved for a multifamily.
Am I making a mess? I'm sorry, I saw you got bad tissues, I thought you were going for you.
I didn't want you to get yourself all ruined. So up to two additional dwelling units, one in the same building or attached and/or detached dwelling unit. Municipality may allow more.
Saying that's for single-family dwelling?
In all areas where single-family housing is allowed.
There is.
This is number three, increased density requirement.
Yeah. I guess we're the, oh, yeah, you were talking about affordable housing, I'm sorry.
Well, I don't know what I was talking about. Yeah, they're, they're both changing, pretty big changes.
Yeah, should have said it was affordable housing.
Yeah, so affordable housing, that's changed, so that's for zoning districts that allow for multifamily dwellings.
And what do we determine as affordable housing?
Well, you don't want somebody just putting up another house on their lot and then turning it into an Airbnb.
It spells out.
Right, right.
Requirements.
It's not for temporary housing.
Affordable housing is, is a definition of that, I used to, very long.
Yeah, okay.
It can't be short-term rental.
Yeah, yeah.
The idea being to increase housing, not to increase Airbnb.
It's to increasing affordable housing.
Yeah.
All of that, well.
And this is mandated, mandating. Increasing any housing. As well, but two, two separate things, right?
Yes. I think so. So this talks about affordable housing, and it talks about increasing, uh, density requirements. In general. So somebody can put a, you know, a, a. Like mommy, grandma bought out back, or, you know.
But it can be. It doesn't have to be an ADU, it can be. As big as setbacks and, and septic conditions allow.
Right.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I don't think it changes one acres, one and a half acre zoning, one house. In, in that, in that zoning area. It doesn't all of a sudden say that you could take a one and a half acre lot that has, that was owned for one acre. And then do these other things to it, that people would have the right to do that, I, I don't believe that. It's still one acre, we've set our municipal zoning as one acre zoning, single-family dwelling. Single-family dwelling on one and a half acres, sorry, not one acre.
Right, I was gonna say one.
No, I'm sorry, I misspoke, but I don't think that changes.
Yep.
One and a half acre zoning for single-family dwellings.
So, uh. So this new law states that the statute does not override existing lawful private real estate restrictions such as the restrictions or provenance easements and other restrictions that limit density.
That's for, that's for septic issues. Number seven.
The statute provides that municipal ordinance may establish requirements for a lot area per dwelling unit as long as the required lot area for subsequent units on a lot is not greater than the required lot area for the first unit.
Oh, that's the one.
Yeah, number five.
Yeah, that needs clarification.
May establish requirements for a lot area. For dwelling unit as long as the required lot area of subsequent units on a lot is not greater than the required lot area for the first unit. Yeah.
Oh, so that, yeah. If that were true, then it wouldn't change.
Well, what we could do is, uh. Well, each individually look through the ordinance, or, I don't know, or.
Would try to, yeah. Can, can we wait, next meeting, you might have more information, or?
From who?
She's going to the.
Yeah, she's, Wendy's going, and I very, very likely will go. We can, you know, make, focus on this, I'm sure, we won't be the only ones.
No, I, I know.
Number five says, uh, there is a fair amount of confusion to exactly what this means. We're, we're also part of that fair amount of conclusion, so I don't think we can determine tonight what it means.
Everybody else is confused.
You can even ask them if they can't deal with it that night, if they can direct us, if they're doing more. Aids to understanding how to go about this.
Oh, they'll answer the question.
Well, but they're gonna need some detail. Yeah, it's just more material.
Yeah.
That, uh.
Well, our town lawyer can't be the only one that. Falls into the category of some confusion.
Yeah.
No, I, me too.
Well, I mean, as far as town lawyers go.
Yeah.
Are we at risk of approving something that we shouldn't approve?
No, I think.
No.
Based on this, nothing before us.
You don't have to, yeah, there's, yeah, to, to approve.
Yeah, nothing is before us that relates to what we're talking about now.
Hmm. No, I didn't think so either.
Yeah, I don't think so.
So we just should.
Table it to next meeting, and we'll have more information from.
When we?
Yeah, we can continue table it. I mean, we have had a little bit of a discussion about it tonight, so. I'll have to dig it off my dashboard, see if I can find my copy again.
We can get you.
I'm sure you can, but let me, let me locate the one that's on my dash first. In fact, I'm gonna look in here, see if I can tuck it in here.
The copy, because I can't find mine.
No, I didn't know what.
I'll give you mine.
All right.
Actually, maybe I should make a copy of this before I give it to you.
Right, well, you can't find yours either, at the moment?
I think I threw it away.
Probably.
I cleaned my truck out, so. Yeah, yeah. Easy to do, yeah.
Sure, you spill coffee on everything.
If you're leaving your truck, it's, 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 it's at risk.
Believe it, if I leave it anywhere but in that file folder up there, it's at risk.
Yeah.
Right.
Me personally.
No, I already said that, so.
Anybody, uh, wanna make a motion to go home?
I'd love to, so.
Yes.
We don't want to hear from Terry?
Mr. Terry, you got his hand up?
No.
Uh, second? Did someone second?
Any discussion?
Yeah, you did.
For one discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Tell them to shut up. Probably gobbledygook, we was gobbledygook.